Everything is here.
We're on record. So, good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Township of Persipony Troy Hills Board of Adjustment. Today is Wednesday, June 25th, 2025, and is 7:32 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it's being conducted in accordance with NJ SA 10,4-6 at set of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. We'll have the roll call, Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. DeCros.
Here.
Mr. Joskowitz.
Here.
Is Mr. Petty here? Nope. Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Mr. Ready.
Present.
And we have Chairman, Chairwoman, Gragnani. We have our Board Planner, Mr. Chadwick is not here. We have our Board Engineer, Acting as Board Engineer and Board Planner, Mr. Lamonowitz.
Here.
And our Board Attorney, Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Would you please stand with us for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of the Constitution, liberty, and justice for all.
Mr. Lamonowitz, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that any testimony that you give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Can you...
Yes, I do.
Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on something other than what is on our agenda for this evening? I see none. So, we have some correspondence. From, correspondence received from Bill Lutz, request and application 2504, that was on the agenda tonight, be carried from June 25th to September 10th, 2025, without further notice, but with publication in the Daily Record and he grants the Board an extension of time to make decision on the application. And we have...
Well, you need a vote to grant that request.
Sorry, I always forget that. Can I have a motion for that?
Some more.
Second.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Resolutions, I have three on there for you. We're only approving two this evening. We have application 2505 and Berkowitz, DeCros, Joskowitz, Ready, Lewins, and Gragnani can vote, can have a motion?
Some more.
Second.
Okay. Excuse me, Berkowitz?
Yes.
DeCros?
Yes.
Joskowitz?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Gragnani?
Yes.
And our other resolution, application 2465, we have Berkowitz, DeCros, Petty's not here, Quinn, Ready, and Gragnani, have a motion?
Some move.
Okay.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
DeCros?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Gragnani?
Yes.
Thank you, Nora. Application 24:79, Mr. Patel, 104 Hillside Terrace, block 387, lot 6, zone R3, a C variance to construct additions, front landing and stairs, front walk, rear landing and stairs, air conditioning units on concrete pad, and reconfigured driveway with expansion contrary to section 430-35, columns 5 and 10, and section 430-275H. Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Great. State your name, spell your last name, please.
Prakash Kumar Patel. P-R-A-K-A-S-S, K-U-L-M-Y-A-R, Patel, P-A-T-L.
Great. You can have a seat. Just make sure that you slide that microphone, the whole thing, close to you so that you speak right into the microphone, okay?
Good evening, everyone.
So, why don't you tell the Board what it is that you'd like to do? Are you the owner of the property?
Yes, sir.
And do you have any, besides yourself, is there anybody here to testify?
No.
So, what is that, what is that the property now?
104 Hillside Terrace, Persipony, New Jersey, 07054.
Right. What is on that site right now?
Right now, I have a ranch-style house where I live with my family.
Okay, you live there with your family?
Yeah, with me, my wife, my daughter, and my son.
Okay, and, um, and what, you want to make some improvements to that property, to the house? You want to make some additions, some changes?
Yeah, I have to do some extension and addition for my house because I have a roof leaking and I have a lot of water coming from the Green Hill Plaza in the, it's in the front parking lot. I have no CO system, all water coming in my backyard and it's going in my basement. So, I will prepare the solid footing for that one.
Okay, and did you hire an architect?
Uh, yes.
Is your architect here tonight?
No, he is out of country.
Okay.
Did you and architect met with the engineering department and...
Yes, we, I took the appointment because last time I never received a letter from, from the engineering department. So, then I got a letter from here. I say I have to go and take appointments. So, Brandon from engineering department, he came there. We walked everything and we decided where the location, what we need to do, and the excavation, and the tank, concrete tank for, uh...
Did you review the engineer's report?
Yes, sir.
Did you understand?
Yes, hundred percent.
It is a cost effective?
Yes, I understand.
So, you said you're getting water from where?
From Green Hill Plaza.
Okay.
On a Persipony road.
Okay.
Because my house is exactly behind in the back.
Okay.
And if there is a heavy rain or anything, the water coming from me, my side and my neighbor is going in the middle, it's a lot of water.
So, what are you doing to help with that problem?
I cannot do nothing. I mean, I have water coming in my basement. I was just cleaning up, me and my wife.
Okay, so how does that matter into this?
Because I have to go a little bit, extend in the back and I'm going to putting the concrete footing, solid concrete footing.
Okay.
To eliminate the water coming in my backyard.
So, who told you that's going to work?
I mean, sir, that's, I have only choice, that one, to do the water foundation. Because right now, my foundation is not good in the back side.
Engineering department agreed?
Yes, engineering department.
Drywell, I think.
Oh, that was for the impervious cover, maybe.
Right.
And you, you have the letter from the engineering department, June 20th?
Yeah.
You understand that?
Yes, hundred percent.
So, did you have an engineer make changes to plans since the last time you were here?
Uh, yes, that's why, at last time I was here and actually, Mr. Johnson, you gave me the letter because I don't receive the letter. And then I take the next appointment and we have a Brandon and we have a calculation, everything, and I put it on the main drawing.
Okay, so you, you took the letter that I gave you that came from the municipal engineer?
Yes, sir.
And you gave it to, did you give it to your architect or to an engineer?
No, I first take appointment with the Brandon, with the engineering department.
Here in Persipony.
Yeah, and then we walked through in my house and we decide like how much we need, what area we need. I understand everything, how much is the wall going to be, the depth, everything. Then I give all this information to my engineer and he revise the drawing.
Okay, and that, um, is that the drawing from VP Architectural Designs?
Yes.
Do you have that drawing in front of you?
Yes, sir.
Is that the drawing dated May 6th of 2024?
Yes, sir.
So, does that drawing show the location of a proposed drywell?
Yes, sir.
And is that the drawing that you then took back to the township engineer for him to review?
Yes. And then they issued this, this letter for, then they issued this letter.
Just for the record, that the drawing is May 6th of 24, that's revised May 5th of 25. Thank you, Mr. Lamonowitz. I appreciate that.
You have any questions with the Board? To the left?
No.
That's right?
No, I'm okay.
Are there any questions from the audience on the testimony given by this gentleman only? I see none.
So, just, just to, could you close the loop? You're looking for three variances, I, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes.
One for a side yard setback.
Right.
10 feet is allowed. You're proposing five and a half feet, and that's what's there now, is five and a half feet, correct?
Yes.
Okay. You also need a, um, a variance for driveway width.
Um, yes.
It's currently 10 feet wide. You're making it 24 feet wide, right?
Yeah, because I'm...
You're making it 24 feet, four inches wide.
Yeah, I have right now this, but the garage going to be this, so I want to just add on the, extra on this side.
Okay.
And...
Why does it need to be four more inches than what's allowed?
Four inch?
Yeah, it's four inches more than what's allowed. Why do you need it to be four inches more than what's allowed?
Four inch because I'm, I'm here for, you know, I own a little bit bigger size or at least.
Four inches, we hear?
I, I was asking why you need it. Is there some, some design issue that is why you need it to be 24 feet, four inches?
No, because the, the door going to be in the middle of the house and it's going to go all the way 25, 24 feet. So, that's why the concrete walkway pad.
Okay, so if, if it's not 20 feet, four inches, it won't match up with the walkway? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so that's why you need an extra four inches, right?
Yes, yes. Thank you.
And then you also need a variance for building coverage, your, your...
The coverage, yeah, because...
And that's because of all the different additions and landings and walkways that you want to do?
Yes.
In the house. That's why you need that variance, correct?
Yes.
And could you just get something on the record on why you need to make the house this size?
Because my, my kids are, right now, my daughter is in, you know, she's going high school. My son is coming back. He's in final year. And it's my dream, like I have to do something for, you know, to live. Because I do like, uh, actually, my background is, I'm an engineer and I, I was working for New York City School Construction Authority as a project officer and inspector. Then slowly, slowly, I make my own company and may I start my own construction work and I do as a general contractor for New York City School projects to do the gymnasium, auditorium, libraries.
And you need the house because...
And for, to my, for my dream house to make for my kids and for, for my living family, you know, together.
Are you adding a bedroom?
Yes.
Okay.
And I have to extend one more. So, because right now, the roof is, is leaking. I have basement coming leaking. I have the, all window is, is cracking and the drive is also broken, everything, you know? So, if I go like...
Okay, you're showing, you're showing the board a picture?
Yeah, is he going to give that to you?
Yeah, we're going to need to, we're going to need to take that picture because now you've asked the Board to look at it.
Yes.
Okay, so you're handing me a stack of pictures?
Yes.
Okay.
So, just so you know, we're not necessarily trying to be difficult, but you're asking us to grant you a variance and to do that, we need proof.
That you need it.
Testimony from you.
Yes.
Telling us why we need to grant it.
Okay, so the set of picture, I'm sorry.
No, no, go right ahead.
Okay, the set of pictures that you gave, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 pictures.
Yes.
I marked them as A1 for identification, okay? And then I'm going to pass them around to the Board, okay?
Yes.
Did you take those pictures?
Yes, I...
Okay, what do those pictures show?
I'm sorry.
What, what's on the pictures? Is that your existing house?
Yeah, this is my existing, where I live with my family.
Okay.
He just needs it for the record. You have to say it.
Yep.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, right.
So, the reason you want the Board to look at those pictures is you want to see the current, them to see the current condition of the house.
That's correct.
So that you can explain to the Board what improvements you want to make to the house to make it better. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And you want to add one bedroom?
Uh, one, two, two, two extra bedrooms.
You're adding two additional bedrooms?
Yeah, two bedrooms.
For your family?
I have right now three, yeah.
Okay.
For my family, yeah. Because right now, it's like 10 by 10 room and the kids are big now. I, they, they even don't call their friend to, because we have no enough room. So, she's shy. She say, I don't need to shy, call them here. But they say, no, we have no room here. Where they going to sleep?
Okay.
So, that little bit pinching.
This is your dream home?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I don't, I don't have any other questions.
Did you have any interaction with your neighbors or your one neighbor?
No, everybody is good with me and they are all...
They know what you're doing and everyone seems fine. Okay.
Would someone like to make a recommendation?
Well, they ask who's...
More questions?
Do you have anything else you want the Board to hear? Any other testimony?
For me, no.
Questions from the audience?
Any additional questions from the audience of this applicant, his testimony?
Do you have any witnesses to bring tonight?
Witnesses, my neighbor here.
You have a, there's a neighbor here tonight?
Would your neighbor like to speak?
Wait, hold on. If you're going to speak, you have to come forward. Okay, you have to tell us what your name is.
My name is Susharshan Reddy.
Okay, how do you spell your last name?
V-A-D-D-I.
Okay, and where do you live?
I'm 100 Hillside Terrace.
Okay, can you raise your right hand?
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do you live near?
No, I'm next, he's my next door. So, I lived almost 15 years ago together.
Okay. Okay, would you like to make any statement in either in support of or in opposition to his application?
I mean, I, I, that's what the, that's what he was trying to explain, you know? Now, kids are like, give same, his kids and my kids go to the same school, same class they are there. So, when kids are coming home, like when they want to bring their kids, I mean, like their friends, he, he's like little, what do you call that? Little, he himself is a little shy, I guess. He's blaming on his daughter, but I, I know. He's like, oh my God, my house is too small. What should I do, kind of thing.
Okay, so you support his application?
Hundred percent.
Okay.
Is it cyber secure?
Hundred percent. Just for the record, I work as a chief of maintenance security office for the city.
Thank you very much. Thank you. One of our members?
Sure. I think it looks like a great application. You're improving your home. You're making your dream home. Your kid's coming back from college. You want to live there. That's wonderful. You, you worked with the engineer. You're going to adhere to everything he requested. So, I will be voting in favor of the application.
Thank you.
Second?
We got to do the... Application 2479, Prash Kumar Patel, 104 Hillside Terrace, block 387, lot 6, zone R3, recommend granting a C variance to construct additions, front landing and stairs, front walk, rear landing and stairs, air conditioning units on concrete pad, and reconfigured driveway with expansion contrary to section 430-35, columns 5 and 10, and sections 430-275H, when in accordance with agreeing to the requests and the discussions you had with the town engineer.
Second, Ready?
Berkowitz?
Yes.
DeCros?
Yes.
Joskowitz?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Gragnani?
Yes.
Application is approved. You will be receiving a letter and at that time, you can apply for your zoning permits.
Thank you so much, everyone. I appreciate it, everyone.
Enjoy, guys.
Enjoy. Could you address this to Nora, please?
This is Yevan. I thank him.
Application 24:16, Joseph Kachavali, 3 East Brook Lawn Drive, block 199, lot 44, zone R3, a C variance to construct an in-ground pool and coping pool patio and pool equipment on a concrete pad contrary to section 430-35, column 13.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Could you identify yourselves, please?
Kachavali.
Kelly Kachavali.
By the way.
C-A-C-C-A-V-A-O.
Okay, so why don't you tell the Board what it is that you're proposed to do?
To put in an in-ground pool in a backyard. There isn't one existing right now.
You said there is not one existing right now?
No, it's not.
And you need a variance for impervious coverage, is that correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
So, why does the pool and the pool patio and the pool equipment have to be the size that you have proposed?
We just didn't want a pool. We just had the coping around it. We wanted a little bit of an area, at least for chairs. And the concrete pad is mandatory. That's for the built-in and so forth.
As Mr. Iwakane used to say, a pool is really a collector of water.
That's what he used to say.
Yeah.
And I see there's a report here from the township engineer. Have you seen that?
Uh, maybe.
Okay, let's see. It's dated May 5th of 2025 from Justin Lisa, the municipal engineer.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, he, he makes reference to a drywell plan that you submitted?
Yes.
Okay. He also indicates in there that the drywell must have a minimum of five vertical linear feet below the pipe bottom and that no exceptions will be made at the time of inspection. Do you recall reading that?
Yes.
And are you okay with that?
Yes.
Are you okay with all of the other conditions that he indicated in his May 5th, 2025 memo?
Yes.
Do you have any questions about any of those things?
No.
Seems pretty straightforward to me.
Is there anything else that you want to say?
Nope.
Okay, I assume the pool is for the enjoyment of yourself and your family, correct?
For grandkids, now that they come, yes.
Okay, great. How many grandkids do you have?
Uh, one in a week.
Okay.
First one.
You need it for the grandkids.
Congratulations in advance.
For many years.
Yes. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Questions on what this gentleman is proposing, on his testimony only? I see none. Anyone want to speak in opposition or approval of this application? I see none.
Um, I think it's a wonderful reason to be building a pool.
Thank you, Mr. Director.
I'm a first-time grandfather as well and there's nothing like it. So, I will be voting in favor. Application 24:16, Kachavala, 3 East Brook Lawn Drive, block 199, lot 44, zone R3, recommend granting a C variance to construct an in-ground pool and coping pool patio and pool equipment on a concrete pad contrary to section 430-35, column 13, in accordance with all the requests from the engineering department.
Second, Ready?
Berkowitz?
Yes.
DeCros?
Yes.
Joskowitz?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Gragnani?
Yes.
Application is approved. You will be receiving a notice and at that time, you can apply for your permits.
Thank you.
Enjoy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Application 24:73, Bommeretti, 77 North Beverwood Road, lot 601, lots 3 and 4, zone B5. Preliminary and final major site plan with C D variance to construct residential units over commercial use and install a driveway.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jason Reddy. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Einhorn Barberito here in Denville. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant. As was said, Mr. Bommeretti and we also, this LLC, we've made application to this zoning board for preliminary and final major site plan with conditional use and bulk variances, together with associated waivers, deviations, and exceptions. The property is located at 77 North Beverwood Road here in the Township of Persipony. It's known and designated as lots 3 and 4 and lot 601 on the official Pats map. The property, as is indicated, is located in the B5 local business zone district. The subject property currently contains a one-story commercial building on lot 4 and vacant land on lot 3. The applicant is seeking approval to develop a two-story mixed-use building on the first floor containing existing retail space and constructing a second floor to contain two residential apartments with related site modifications and improvements. There are a series of variances. I can run through those at length, or they are set forth in the plan as reported in the submitting of the application and also the engineer's review report that was received, the board engineer review report that was received.
I think it might be helpful for the Board if you did actually recite the various variances that you're requesting.
Sure, the first one is from the provisions of section 430-129B, which permits dwelling units as an accessory use to the principal use, subject to certain conditions. That's a conditional use variance that we require, which we do not meet all of the conditions. From the provisions of section 430-130, which requires a minimum front yard setback to 10 feet, whereas the existing front yard setback is 9.7 feet, and it's a pre-existing non-conforming condition. From the provisions of section 430-130 and 430-35, which requires a maximum percent lot coverage by building of 35%, whereas the existing lot coverage by building is 44%, and that is a pre-existing non-conforming condition. From the provisions of section 430-130 and 430-35, which requires a maximum percent lot coverage based on impervious coverage of 90%, whereas the applicant's proposing 99%. From the provisions of section 430-132 and 430-276, which requires 18 off-street parking spaces, whereas the existing property currently does not contain any parking spaces, excuse me, and the applicant is proposing a total of four. From the provisions of section 430-132 and 430-275 and 285-7, uh, 2-7B, which establish the off-street parking requirements and standards, we do not conform entirely with all of them. From the provisions of section 430-11B, which requires fences to be 2.5 feet from a property line, whereas 2.4 feet is proposed. From the provisions of section 430-123B and 430-131, which requires a 20-foot wide buffer against the rear property line, whereas 1.2 feet is proposed. From the provisions of section 430-124C, which does not allow off-street parking to be located within any required buffer area, whereas our parking is being proposed within the buffer area. From the provisions of section 430-275, which requires parking spaces to be 9 feet by 18 feet, whereas we're proposing 8 feet by 23 feet. From the provisions of section 430-275F, which requires a minimum width of a two-way garage aisle to be 22 feet, whereas 12 feet is proposed. From the provisions of section 430-275X, which requires that driveway shall be located, should, shall not be located closer than 5 feet to the side of rear block line, whereas 2 feet is proposed. And I think the last one is a sign variance for awning extension into the front yard. The maximum allowed is 3 feet, whereas we're proposing 4.7 feet.
So, that's a total of how many?
13.
13.
I think some of those may be waivers as well of the parking size, but I completely don't understand.
And just, just to make the list complete, there's also variance from 430-258, because the lighting is not compliant. And under 285-7D, the, I'm sorry, based upon American Disabilities Act, the handicapped space is not compliant? I told you. Okay, I'm just trying to follow.
Lighting one I didn't have. Just for the record, legal notices were mailed to property owners within 200 feet on May 9th. Legal notice was published in the Daily Record on May 12th for proof of service and affidavit of publication was provided to the Board on or about June 5th. And we did receive from the Morris County Planning Board, a letter of exemption dated November 13th, 2024. I have three witnesses tonight, the engineer, the architect, and the planner. So, unless there's any preliminary... any preliminaries, I can call my first witness.
Sure, go ahead.
Good evening.
You know not to turn off the microphone, right? Don't touch the buttons.
Touch the flippy then.
Hello? Good evening.
Can you raise your right hand, please?
Certainly.
Do you swear or affirm, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Great, state your name, spell your last name.
Adam Kan-Diel, last name spelled K-A-N-D-I-L.
You've justified before this board before?
I have, yes.
Been qualified as a, what is your area of expertise?
Professional engineer.
Correct, and you've been qualified as a professional engineer before this board on numerous occasions, correct?
I have, yes.
License still in good standing?
It is.
Great, he's qualified.
Awesome.
All right, Adam, I'm going to turn it over to you to give the board an overview of the existing site and our proposed conditions.
Yeah, certainly. So going through the bulk requirements, I'll go through the bulk requirements and then go into the existing. As council has discussed, most of the variances that are requested, essentially the site, from the building standpoint, remains the same, and we're adding a second story addition to the existing footprint of that building, which further exuberates the, it further exuberates the maximum percent coverage based on impervious coverage, which we go from 59% to 94%. And this is certainly in an effort to maximize the amount of parking that we can try to fit onto the site. In addition to that, what the bulk requirements is the building height, which right now is a one-story, and we're going to 27.46 feet. So under the allowable of 30, under the allowable of 35. And in addition to that, for the most part, those are the bulk requirements. And then the minimum gross floor area, we go up to a total gross floor area of the building of 5,540 square feet. As council discussed, there's an existing front yard variance, 9.7 or 10 feet is required. That's with regards to that, and then we're going to go to the existing conditions. As you'll note here, existing conditions, we have the existing building that we're talking about over here, which is what's called a 2,700 square foot roughly footprint. And the adjacent Lot 3, which is vacant right now, is where we're looking to add the additional parking. Yeah, we'll see, buddy. Can everybody, can everybody see the board?
So you're going to merge the lots?
Yes, we're going to consolidate the lot, yes, as a, as a result of the application.
Okay. And if you, the existing building envelope is not increasing, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. But the impervious coverage is increasing because you're adding pavement to add parking?
That is correct.
Mr. Shandell, can you just verify the footprint, because there's a conflict within the application on the footprint of the building?
I have 2,770 square feet is what we're getting as the gross from the outside. Yeah, and then there is, just, just getting clarification from, that will be infilling a portion, there is like a little triangle here on the front, that as a result, when we go up, we'll be infilling that on the ground level. So the increase of the impervious, of the building footprint would go to that 2,770 because of that, so that might be why the discrepancy.
Is there any history of water issues?
So, yeah, with regards to stormwater, I didn't, it didn't appear that there was any issues with stormwater. When I did go into the building when it was vacant, there was some moisture, but that was as a result of the building being unoccupied for quite a while. So there was some moisture in the building at that instance, but it didn't appear that that was from the stormwater. There is certainly some vapor and moisture, because the backside of the building here is actually covered with dirt. So the, the dirt currently now is above and buries the finished floor of the building in the back. So there is some moisture and vapor coming.
Is the landlord here? Is the owner here?
Yeah.
Would you ask the owner if there's been any problems with water?
Sure, I mean, he's only owned it since the last, 2014?
Yes. Okay.
Shall we swear?
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you state your name and spell your last name, please? Make sure you speak into the microphone.
Ramamohan Bommeretti, last name is B for boy, O-M-M-A-R-E-D-D-Y.
And you're the owner of the building?
Yes.
And how long have you owned it?
Something, as I mentioned, 2014.
Is there currently a tenant in the building?
No.
When is the last time there was a tenant?
There was no tenant, ever since I took over. There was a tenant before, when I took over, and he vacated, he used to be a cabinet maker.
And when did he, did he vacate before you bought the property?
No, after.
After, so he was there when you bought the property?
Yes.
Have a seat, please. Have a seat.
Oh, yeah, have a seat, yeah.
In the 11 years you've owned it, do you have any history with having a water, a water issue?
I never had any water issue, except maybe when there's heavy rain, I might have seen some seepage from it, because the back of the building is almost five, six feet high, so there must be, no maintenance of the building, that could be areas.
Is there a basement?
No, no basement.
It's a layup. Okay. Okay.
Just a question, the cabinet, the cabinet maker there before, has there been any tests to see if there's any residual lacquers or thinners or anything in the building?
No, no, had any issues, no.
Because as a, using residential, the triggers for remediation for chemicals like that is a lower threshold if you're going to go to residential?
I don't think that he has, he is, does finish work of the cabinets under it.
Right, but that would be lacquers, polyuretics, that's what you put on the outside of the cabinet to make it look nice, just wondering if...
I, I'm not aware of anything that in the place.
So do you think we need that as a condition if we just so move ahead?
I mean, that's an option you have. Do you know how long the cabinet company was there?
No idea. It was a long time. When I bought it, he was there, that's all, and...
But definitely not 10 years, he's not there.
Because there's also the potential of people, you know, dumping the stuff outside on that vacant area.
Oh, no, no, there was no dumping at all, ever since I bought it.
All clean?
No.
You said all clean?
Oh, yeah, everything was, concrete floor and everything.
No more, no questions?
Yeah, and on the rear, that's where the, the building's buried, so there is definitely some seepage like that when the moisture, so at one point, the roof was leaking, I remember when we first went there, and I think that was repaired, right, at one point?
So nobody's occupied the building?
No.
Building's been empty, sitting there.
Ever since. At least, I'm trying to do something at this moment.
Yeah.
And I think everybody knows the location, so it's the closest intersection, Harata Boulevard, to the north is Lake Harata Dairy, to the south Santiago, and across is the meat and grocery market across on North Beverwood. So with regards to existing conditions, that essentially is what we're looking to do, trying to, in an attempt to add as much parking as possible. We do understand it is narrow, but hoping to make the situation a little better with regards to parking. A lot of the establishments on the road there don't have parking, but we're in a, in a best attempt to provide parking, or that's what we're seeking to do with this application. I'm going to just put up the proposed conditions. So as you can see, just the same building footprint, we have a tribway access coming in through here, we have one, two, three, essentially parallel parking spaces, in an attempt to create that other one, we have that fourth spot here. As M. Shing said, it's not LVA compliant, but in an attempt to provide an additional parking spot there.
Now, you, you submitted a sheet with turning templates. Can that rear space against the back line be accessed if the other three spaces have cars in it?
If, if these have, if the cars are parked here, could this be accessed?
Correct.
Uh, yeah.
Because that's not what your turning template shows.
The turning template, which I think we have as well, well, the vehicle has to back out.
No, what I'm saying is, according to your turning template, in order to get into the rear, I'll call it the handicap space, but it's not qualified for that, in order to get to the handicap space, the car has to go into that last parallel space in order to make the swing. So if there's a car in that last space, that one in the back's not accessible, nobody can get in or out.
Okay.
Because if you look at your sheet, I think it's a one of one, I think.
I do, it was my understanding previously when this curve turned.
Do you have that sheet?
Do you have the turning template here? Yeah.
Right where that, as it makes the turn, it's in that last parking space.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, right there, right where your finger was, that's a park, that means that that last space has to be empty.
Yeah, yeah, I do, I do see, so these two are acceptable, that last spot, yeah, would need to be empty or be the joint, the same tenant.
So in effect, you've only got three parking spaces.
Yeah, or essentially, these could be the same, they could be two spaces associated with the same tenant, if possible.
But even that, if you look at where your lines are, you've got like inches to spare as somebody's trying to reverse out of that, which I don't think is very practical at all.
Yeah, and we know coming into, I mean, with the, with regards to the parking, it is a little tight, so we are trying to do the best we can with that area, and, you know, I mean, in the event that, you know, we can make that work, if we have to lose that other one, we, we would lose it, but we are trying to do the best we can, we're trying to maximize the parking spaces there, like, and in the event, so if these are, you know, if the units are going to have 1.8 or two cars per unit, that they, that they can be coordinated, that these two spots be the same unit or tenant, so that they can coordinate with one another.
Is it your intention to limit the parking to the tenants on the second floor?
That is the intention.
And how's that going to be enforced?
So we would, we would probably put a sign just saying no overnight parking and permit parking only, which would be issued by the landlord.
And are you going to have a restriction in the lease as to how many cars the tenants can have?
Uh, yes, it would be two per each tenant.
And how's that going to be enforced?
So that would be on the lease, they would know that upfront, that they're only allowed to, two parking spaces per unit.
How many bedrooms are each of them?
These are two, each one is two bedrooms.
And did you say, if I understood you correctly, that when they want to exit, they have to back out?
That is correct.
There isn't enough of a radius for them to turn around, to come forward, so they're going to be coming, backing out?
Either back in or back out.
And our engineer is indicating that it's almost impossible.
It's a tight area.
Well, to make the turn in the back is, is, is not practical. Reversing on the North Beverwood Road, I think I've got some significant safety issues with that, because you can't see.
Yeah.
And you're going to have cars there, you've got the ice cream shop next door with, with outdoor dining.
Kids.
I think that reversing on the North Beverwood is, is a, is going to have some safety issues. That's not a little side street, that's a main, main roadway. So like I said, now, the, you have, again, that handicap space is not, is not valid, and the board can't give you a waiver from the federal.
Correct.
But walking back to the front door to get into the building, the aisle is substandard in width, it's only 12 feet wide, you've got people reversing down that while other people are trying to walk to get to North Beverwood Road, it just doesn't seem like you've got a whole lot of space there. How are the tenants going to access the apartments on the second floor, from the front?
They would, they would also come, yeah, they would come to the front, and there's also a rear, there's a rear entrance, which the architect will also show, but there's a rear entrance, but they would access through the front.
Can I see this?
Yeah.
Where are they going to access from the front?
The corner is...
Yeah, here, and then the back.
Your parking calculations assume one space per 200 square feet.
Correct.
Are you going to, is it the owner's intention to restrict the use of that commercial space, not to use the other, there's other uses allowed in that zone with more, with a higher parking requirement, barber shops, nail salon, offices, so on and so forth? Or is that going to be, you're going to be restricted, you're not going to have those types of tenants? Because that would require, I think, I think the most likely, kind of, almost like 18 parking spaces, not 14.
And so we're, we're parking, well, the requirement we're, we're saying is one per 200 gross floor on the, on the plans, which again, is a general commercial, so I think the question is if there was like a restaurant or something that's a higher intensity, if we would be restricted to the parking regulations of 14, if that's the, if that's something you're willing to do as the, as the owner.
Not to be really restaurants, but sitting only takeout?
If I could understand your point, in other words, you're asking whether the applicant would agree to restrict tenants to certain uses that would require less...
Not to sit at a restaurant, only for takeout.
Use the microphone, please.
And I think what we would, and I think what we would be okay with is restricting to a, a use that 10 spaces is okay for the commercial, as long as it conforms with 10 spaces, because we'd be allocating for, well, for really for the, for the residential, and then the required 10, which would be allocated to a commercial, that would be, by getting relief, we would be requesting that, as long as the use doesn't go beyond 10 spaces, that a use of that capacity could be...
Is that because you have no spaces?
We have no spaces, correct.
And again, that what they, what their planning is required goes against, goes with the discussion on the parking variance. So what they're saying is they're not going to have a grocery store, they're not going to have a barber shop, beauty shop, laundry, cleaners, shoe repair, restaurants, medical or dental offices, educational instruction, none of those uses are going to be in this building.
Well, so to be, so the intent from the applicant's standpoint is that we don't have a tenant yet, right? Once it's approved, he would be looking to market it for a tenant, that, that space. So there's no specific tenant now, but as long as that tenant's use does not require or yield more than 10 spaces, we hope that the board would allow any use that is approved in the B5 zone to, to occupy this building.
But the relief is really zero to 10?
The relief is zero for the 10. Correct.
How many spaces are you proposing at the present time with the two apartments and whatever business will be?
So what's proposed now is the, is the four spaces, the one, two, three, four, so four in total.
But can you do four?
We have, we don't think we, we can.
You can't do four.
Did you think about making one apartment upstairs?
No, no.
One.
Okay.
And is the, is the space, am I to understand, did I hear correctly, that the width of that parking area is not sufficient, it's less than what is required?
Yes, that's correct. Let me go back to the site plan. So here's the site plan, so currently, right now, it's really a one way. Yeah, what we're proposing right now is really just a 12-foot wide aisle, so the spaces are eight, eight by 23 foot long and a 12-foot wide aisle, so it could be increased by about a foot or so, but we're really landlocked between that space. I mean, again, it's, it's an effort to get as... I mean, again, it's, it's an effort to get as much off-street parking as we can within the limited space of that lot that we have adjacent to us.
By paving the entire thing?
By paving the entire thing.
On the street, in front, is there, is there legal parking right in front of it?
Uh, there is, there is. And that is also a potential trade-off that we would also be looking at, is not putting any off-site, if there is consideration for not putting any off-site, I mean, onsite, if there's consideration for off-site.
Now, that, there's no, that's lawn right now, there's no drop curb there now.
There's no drop curb.
You're gonna lose a parking space on the street to make the driveway.
That is correct. That is correct.
So you're making it worse.
Has, has your traffic, I don't know whether you have a traffic engineer or not, but have they been to this location during the week and on the weekends when, let's say, someone is using the ice cream store, or they're using the cleaners where they're parking in the street?
Well, there's certainly, there's certainly street parking available, and, you know, just, I mean, we have not done a traffic study, but just knowing the area and going there, there is certainly street parking available, and we also have the public parking lot beyond, you know, down the street beyond Santiago, as you keep walking down, but there is certainly enough parking on the street there that we anticipate that there is, and that's why the parking is really gonna be reserved only for the residential, but there is certainly enough when we go throughout the day, because there's all these different types of uses during, on this main street, that allows at different times that you can find an open space if you want to try this restaurant, or go to the barber, or go to a specific use there. So there are certainly enough street parking, but again, this was, this was certainly an effort to try to get as much as we can off-street parking.
But when you said you're, you made it kinda like you're doing it to alleviate an issue, not having the business park in the back, it wasn't realistic to have the business park in the back, it's, you don't even have no signs for the tenants, parking for the tenants, so that's not really true.
Yeah.
It's true, but it's not the reason you're doing it. There's parking for residential, that's their parking, you're not giving it to the business to use that parking during the day, because the tenants could be there, so that's not really.
Yeah, yeah, we don't, we would, yeah, we don't want it to be for commercial, for the commercial use, we would prefer the commercial use to be using on-street parking, it'll be really limited to the residential.
Are you gonna mark that rear parking for handicap?
Um, we would, we would not necessarily mark it, but, because it's not gonna meet the standards, but depending on the tenant, if a tenant was in need of having a handicap space, then we would do whatever we can to modify a space or to present a space that could work from a handicap standpoint.
But if our engineer said, we can't give a variance.
Right.
For a federal law, how do you get around that?
You know, so we would, we would basically put it as residential, so we would just use it as residential, residential doesn't require, it's not, it's not, doesn't, it's not multifamily, it's just a two-family house, it's a two-family apartment there on top, so we would just eliminate the handicap and just make it a standard space.
Now, if you had a handicapped tenant, if you did have a handicapped tenant on the second floor, the designated spot for that handicapped person is the furthest away from the entrance door to the second floor, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And it would not permit a wheelchair to get out of, to get out of that vehicle, correct?
Correct.
So how is that a realistic handicap spot?
It's, yeah, it's right, it's, it's not, I mean, this was just, you know, if needed, we would provide a five-foot strip along the back there, to allow for unloading for somebody to get out of a wheelchair.
And then, is there a designated walkway along the side of the building to, for pedestrians to get from their vehicles out to North Beverwood Road?
So they would walk along the building, and we do have like some bollards over there to allow them to walk along the side, but it's not, there's not a three-foot strip for them to get through.
And to get into, I'll call it spot number two.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, those three spots are parallel parking spots, right? So to get into spot two, you've gotta pull up to spot three and back into that spot.
That's correct.
With the bollards on your left-hand side, and a car on your right-hand side.
That's correct.
Did you look at the, the turning to get into there?
Um, well, like I said, the turning for the back one doesn't work, 12-foot aisle, to get in, it's like parking in the side of the street, I mean, if you have a 12-foot lane that your car's in, and back into parallel, it's doable, it's doable, it's tight, but it's doable.
I mean, the main, the main thing is certainly gonna be the ability for a car to come out, and they would essentially have to back in to the site and then come out with their face.
Yeah, how does that happen? Nobody's doing that.
They're, they're gonna just pull.
They're gonna pull up here.
Because someone could be backing in, someone's trying to back out, and they meet in the middle somewhere.
It would be similar to somebody if they were parallel parking on the street, right? They would stop their car, they'd put their brakes on, wait for cars in the back to stop, and then they would back into.
I can tell you what's gonna happen, that back lot, you're gonna have two tenants upstairs, right, you're gonna have, let's assume they have four cars each, someone's gonna park in that spot in the back, and then their roommate is gonna block them in. That's practically probably what's going to happen.
And that's, and that's how it'd be coordinated with the same tenant, right, on the same unit.
You're not gonna have that as a designated spot, but.
Well, they would be assigned their spots, I mean, they, we would assign their spots, so we can essentially, the two that are behind each other, we can assign those two spots to the same, to the same tenant.
And when they got a friend over, they're gonna block that tenant in, because that's where they're gonna park, because no one's gonna enforce that.
It does feel like you're, I appreciate that the landlord wants to make use of a, of a spot that hasn't had a tenant in years, it just feels like you're cramping a lot of stuff in a very small area. And a little bit dangerous in the sense of, you have an ice cream parlor, couple of, you know, stores down.
One store.
Uh, one store down, even closer, thank you, and cars could be backing out of that, which makes it even worse.
Understood.
So there's some real concerns there for me.
Now, with regards to the concerns, would it, I mean, we know the area, and we know, especially at night, if you were to go at nighttime, you certainly would find available spots, and it's something that we can discuss, but if we could at least have the ability to have the on-street parking, would that be something that would sit better with the board of having no off-site parking and utilizing just the street parking?
No onsite, no onsite parking.
Correct.
You're putting a burden on the, on the, on the spots that are there, and you're cutting out one spot to begin with.
Yeah.
And then you have residents, so they're gonna park, take up those spots for 20, someone goes away, they leave their car there for 24 hours, or whatever.
Is that no overnight parking, or is there a snow situation on that street?
It doesn't go out to the other side.
Yeah, that's the townwide, you're not supposed to park when it's snowing.
And then what?
Well, if they have residents, I don't know, I mean, the business could be, business is a business, but if you live there, and it snows on Saturday, you expect not to have to leave the house.
And how would it work with, with the, the parking lot down the, that's the township property? I know it's not designated for a specific site, but is there any way to seek a permit or something from the town?
It's not something we can grant you.
There any other questions? Mr. Candell, are you?
I have so many.
Yes, okay. Mr. Berkowitz?
Do you have any idea how many other businesses or apartments are within, I don't know, two blocks that have no parking?
There's several businesses down the street, along Lake Howard that have no parking, I mean, as you get to the.
I guess, let's just, let's just think in terms of mixed use, mixed uses. With, I guess, a business use downstairs, an apartment upstairs, are there others that have no parking?
I mean, I'd probably leave that for Donna, for the planner.
For the planner?
Yeah.
I mean, if you didn't have parking on this site, then I guess the development would be in tune with the rest of the neighborhood.
That is correct.
And could you then use that property for some recreational use by the tenants?
That, yeah, that's certainly something that we would prefer to do or to entertain, is to utilize it for something else, or some greenery there as well.
But if you, if, then if you don't have any parking, and let's say it is for greenery, then you're putting a burden on the other businesses that are on that street, that when they have, when they have people come to either the chiropractic office, or the Dairy Queen, or the dry cleaners, you're putting a burden on those residents that want to park in the street, if they're gonna have their cars in the street on a permanent basis.
Why would they be permanent?
Because they live upstairs.
They live upstairs, where they're gonna put their cars.
They're gonna work during the day.
Not everybody.
All right. Okay.
It's not, it's not an ideal situation, I'm just looking for alternatives.
I just wanna make sure we've kinda closed the loop on Mr. Lamanis's question about uses on, in the commercial space. I think the question is, is your client willing to specifically limit uses in that space to certain uses that are less intense in terms of parking? Not sure how we quite define that in a resolution, but let's just get that question out first.
I need to have an offline conversation.
Understood.
Because it's just raves, so they can't put them on a spot against that.
Understood, but I think that's a question that is.
We take a five-minute break.
That's a question that's pending, so I think we need to kinda figure that out.
I think the way we word that is that the use, no commercial use in the business can have, require more parking spaces than one per 200.
Okay, we could do that, but first let's see.
That's the easiest way to do, because that's the number that is used.
Yeah.
Mr. Bush, do you have a question?
No, no, he just, he just answered.
Okay.
He must've been thinking like he saw me thinking it.
Anyone else have a question of this?
With respect to the drainers, I couldn't find any report, what did you use for void ratio?
Forty percent. Forty percent.
The ordinance requires 33%.
Okay.
Is there, is there a storm drain in front of the property?
Uh, there is, there is no storm drain in front of the property.
Because there's an inlet at the corner to the north, and there's another inlet, maybe one or two properties to the south, so the question is, is there a storm pipe connecting those two?
There is, there is storm piping down the road, but there's no catch basin along our front edge.
Right, the closest one is on the, is there, but there's another one down that, again, down south, so my question is, is there a pipe connecting those two?
It's my understanding that there is, I can verify that.
Because right now, you have the building and grass flowing towards North Beverwood sheet flow.
Correct.
You're gonna pave all that, and you're gonna, but continue to send it across the sidewalk into the street. The drywall should be connected to that storm drain as an overflow, so you don't have sheet flow, particularly in ice and whatever, going across the sidewalk concentrated like that.
Certainly, and we could, if needed, we could put a trench drain as well to pick it up if needed.
Or you're gonna have to do something for like a sump or something, you know, to catch the sands and grates or whatever, so it doesn't contaminate your drywall.
Certainly. We can do that.
Do you have any other questions from the board? Is there anyone in the audience? Someone I know it's you.
Just, do you have my letter of June 23rd?
I did not get your June 23rd letter, I.
Okay.
I got your original letter that we responded to.
Okay, and again, the packets, but it, you know, I got it a little bit late, so I wasn't able to get this together. We have the soil permit issue.
I know that we're there writing.
And in your response letter, it said the engineering department had no objections, but the planning board grants, so we need to see what you submitted to them, just like I submit writing reports, the board still have to see all the information, so that, whatever you submitted to the, to the town, to the town engineer should be submitted to the board for review.
Same package.
Okay, because.
The same original package went to them, the original.
The town engineer, I spoke with, I spoke with him, and they're gonna be looking for some kind of dedication, because the right-of-way for this, the right-of-way line is literally like right behind the curb.
Right there, okay.
So I wasn't able to get a good definition on that, but that was something that he was good, that he asked, asked, had asked for.
Would it be to conform to the 50-foot right-of-way, or above and beyond?
Again, I didn't speak to him, I wasn't able to speak to him on specifics, but basically they want, they want these, you know, the sidewalk, or at least, and again, I'm not knowing what his dimensions are yet, some dedication, whether it's an access, a public easement, a public access easement, or dedication or right-of-way, something, so that they have control there. The transmittal said that there were gonna be updated architectural plans with signage. I'll ask, I guess, ask the architect, because I didn't get any architectural plans, but that was, and I was on your letter. The building height calculation is, needs to be, needs to be revised, I'm sorry, the building calculation was revised, but the dimension on the engineering plans don't match the dimensions on the architects.
On the architects.
So you gotta get, you did it right, but the question is, do you have the right?
Finish floor to peak.
The North Beverwood, the driveway, there's a, there's some conflicting information about that driveway. This township is right now going through a streetscape project, and they do not, they are not gonna have the curb returns go into the property like that.
Okay.
It has to be a standard apron.
Okay.
And there's gonna be, need to be some communication, because once they pave that road, you got a five-year moratorium for excavating again. The stop sign, you added the planters like I suggested, and just for the board's information, the reason I asked them to add the planters is to force the people not to walk up against the front of the building, so that if someone's coming out of the, coming out with a vehicle, you've got a little more time to see the person walking past. But again, I, I mean, I think that'll help, but I don't think it's, I really don't think it's gonna be enough to make that driveway safe. But if the board is, is gonna accept that parking lot, the stop sign should go on the site side of the sidewalk. You have it at the curb.
Okay.
So they want them to stop before they get into the sidewalk.
Yeah.
The handicap parking, we decided it's not gonna be handicap parking. We talked about the turning radiuses, trash, the trash is in the back of the building by that last space, how is that handled as far as collection?
So it'd be wheeled out to the curb side for pickup.
So someone, all the tenants are gonna do their own garbage can kinda thing?
That's correct, and then also the commercial space as well.
Okay.
So the commercial space would be, it would be contained indoors and then brought out.
Okay, we already talked about the void ratio. Manager, that's all I have against witness.
Does anybody in the public have any questions? Members of the public?
Yes, I'm just wondering if the board has any questions.
Oh, sorry.
Any questions from the board?
Nope.
Anyone in the public that would have questions of this applicant and his testimony only? Please come up if you have any questions. See none?
Do you have?
Yes, please, come up.
Do you have a question of this witness?
No, just wanted to make a comment.
This is.
Comments, go ahead.
No problem. No, this is an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions of the witness. If you are a member of the public that has comments either in support of or in opposition to the application, there'll be a time after the.
That's fine.
To make your comments about that.
Is your testimony complete, Mr. Candell?
Yes, it is.
You want to take a five-minute break so I can talk?
Surely.
Sure, yeah, it's fine, go ahead, yeah.
What we would request the board is, we've heard some really helpful information and comments, we'd ask to postpone the rest of the.
What we would request the board is, we've heard some really helpful information and comments, we'd ask to postpone the rest of tonight, carry the application, let us digest it, sort of regroup in terms of, uh, a lot of the comments and things like that, let us sort of resort that and see what we can do to address a lot of those, if you'd like to, you know, carry this to whatever the next available is.
Okay.
Well, not in two weeks, because you know, you have a little time, we may explain to you.
I was figuring out.
And you're granting the board all necessary extensions, right?
Yes.
October 29th.
Ooh. Wow.
October 29th.
October 29th?
That'll give you time.
Really, almost.
Great, okay, motion.
Do you have a...
So moved.
I moved it.
Second.
No, no.
No, no, gentlemen, the attorney is still speaking, go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
With no further notice.
Correct, no further notices.
Okay.
So for any members of the public that are here, the application's being carried till October 29th. Oh, but you still need a motion?
Motion, we did it.
Indeed, we did it.
Mr. Post was one, I was two.
Okay. Do we have a motion for the adjourned, please?
Wait, hold on, we haven't, we haven't...
No, we have to...
The motion to carry this.
Yeah, we have.
We have a motion and a second, so we're carrying this application to the 29th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now?
Now?
Now? Okay. Adjourned, please?
Yes, motion.
Second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.